For Thursday, January 28, 2016, a regular meeting. Present at the moment is Mrs. Lou McCormick. We expect Mr. Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Tricia Pitko. We expect Mrs. Maxon Cannelly and Mr. John Llewellyn. So if I could ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full agenda today and will not be getting to the budget until item number six A, but to alert board members that seven documents were placed at your seat in response to Tuesday's discussion, the Contract for Effective School Solutions, the Budget versus Actual for Degree Changes that was asked for, I Ready, STAR, some school playground backup information, a breakout of the professional technical services, and updating the legal fees, a document to show both encumbered and paid. So for those of you who may want to take a quick glance at that when we get to the budget, they're in front of you. Again, I thank the staff for working hard over the last 48 hours to put that together. So first, student reports. We always seem to put L before W, so why don't we go with Ward first? And who would like to speak for Ward?
Hi, I'm Brittany Schuster. So this past Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, we had midterms. All the students were very nervous, but the teachers were very reassuring to us. We're all glad that they're over, to start off. It went very well, though. There was no snow interruption. Sadly, we had the snowstorm on a Saturday, so we did have school on Monday. We're also getting ready for course selections now. We're having student-teacher meetings, and the teachers are making sure that we choose courses that are academically suitable to us, but also challenging us to our best abilities. Also, in addition to that, we have the solar project on the roof, in which 2,200 panels are being installed on our roof in an attempt to go green. It started in November, and it is expected to be completed in late February or early March. Thankfully, it's not a disruption to any of the classes, so it's a great attempt. Upcoming on February 2 is the AMC, otherwise known as the American Mathematics Competition, in which students of all grade levels, assuming that they are taking a math course, is invited to attend and to compete in. And if your score is high enough, you will go on to the state level and the national and so on. Also mentioned, like last time, like Ludlow mentioned, the Ward students have begun receiving the student surveys that the teachers are distributing, so that during teacher meetings they can discuss what is going well and what is not, a difference from last year, which is highly appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our students from Fairfield Ward High School? No? Thank you very much. Fairfield Ludlow?
So just to go off the theme of midterms, this year we didn't have a scheduled review day to go over the graded midterms, but a lot of the teachers have chosen to take the time out of the classes to go over them with students, which has been very beneficial. And of course, seniors are very excited for the starting period three. Yesterday was actually the first Project Runway meeting for the seniors, and this is an event, it's going to be the ninth annual Project Runway this year. And the event includes fashion and food provided by the Fairfield Ludlow student-run restaurant and catering. And today was actually the Junior Parent Coffee meeting, which Mr. Hattis actually hosts, as well as the PTA president. And it gives the parents an opportunity to ask questions and get a look for what's coming for their children for senior year.
Well, I'd like to say about midterms, I might be in the minority here, but I'm someone who likes midterms. You get to come in, stay for like two or three hours, fill in some bubbles and leave. But...
That's all there is to it? I guess I could take that kind of a test.
And on a more serious note, this is marking period three now, in which all the seniors will be taking health class. Additionally, there's going to be a course selection meeting for the underclassmen to know what their courses hold for them in senior year. And there are several optional exams being administered, the AMC, which the Ward students mentioned, the American Mathematics Competition. And as they mentioned, if you do well enough, you move on to the next level. Unfortunately, Ludlow hasn't sent anyone on to next level for two years. And the National Latin exam is also being administered, which our students tend to do well in. And the sophomore class of 2018 is planning the sophomore dance, which is coming up.
Thank you. Any questions for our student representatives from Fairfield Ludlow, please?
I just have to follow up on that comment you made. So what does it take for the students to move up a level? What do you think the cause of that is, if we had a history before and the last two years we haven't?
Well...
Guys are partying too much, I think.
The American Mathematics Competition, I took it the past two years, or past three years, and I'll take it this year, too. We offer the AMC 12 in Fairfield, and it's a challenging exam. It uses not really calculus as such, but pre-calculus and lower math classes, but the problems are designed in a way to be very challenging, and you have to achieve a score of 100 or above to move on. And so I think it's just something very different from what you see in your regular school math.
Thank you. Any other questions for our students? If not, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay, and you're welcome to go at your individual pleasure. Item number four, public comment. This is the time for members of the public to come forward and talk about any item that is on the agenda. You can talk about it now, or you can talk about it when it comes up. You can't talk about it at both times. You have one opportunity to talk about that subject. Anybody that wishes to come forward at this time for public comment? Seeing nobody coming forward, on to old business. The approval of the bylaw amendment, as suggested by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, that the Board of Education approved the bylaw amendment, Article 5, Section 6, and it's enclosed as enclosure number one. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, do you wish to move that? Is there a second? Does somebody from that study committee want to? Mrs. Gerber? Mrs. Gerber? Okay. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, you have the floor.
Thank you. So once again, I'll reiterate what I said earlier, but that does seem like quite some time ago that I brought this forward, and again, back to last December. What had motivated myself, I can't speak for Mr. Calabrese and Mrs. Gerber, but what had motivated myself and has since we passed the last bylaw amendment and actually had it tested in the course of our meetings, but what had bothered me, and which I've spoken to about this fall, is a notion of the lack of clarity for the public, that while it was done with good intentions, it was frequently confusing for the public when to speak, when not to speak, and what have you. You know, we taught, when we met, we spoke broadly about public comment, and then specifically to how we might improve this. And ultimately, what we arrived at was at least, we believe, improving the clarity for the public in terms of the definition of old business and new business. That's a distinct point in time, gives direction to the board, the public, the chair. And again, the board members, please note that my error of the last time of a member of the public can only speak to a topic once at a meeting, that language is where it was intended to be. It was never intended to be stricken. And so that was the motivation all along and has always been, whenever I have spoken about public comment, is recognizing it wasn't working and looking to make it so that it was more clear for the public.
Does the seconder wish to make any comments? People who met with the study group, do you wish to make any comments? Mr. Calabrese?
Obviously, I support this amendment. It's not 100 percent to where I want it to be, but for what we were trying to do to provide the clarity to the public, it does that. So I don't think there will be any more confusion as to when or when they can speak, you know. And the next step to this, as I've stated all along, and I know other people have stated as well, we want to get in there something for the public at the beginning of the meeting where they can speak on possibly any topic. I know that's a debatable option, but I'm in favor of that. But right now, what's presented before us, I am supporting, so I hope you guys do as well.
Any other board members wish to make a comment? Mr. Llewellyn?
A couple of quick questions, actually, through the chair to Mr. Calabrese. You said this isn't quite where you wanted it to be. What would you have liked to have seen that was different?
Well, just like I stated, I would like to see public comment, open public comment at the beginning for, again, maybe 15 minutes, maybe 20 minutes, 30 minutes, whatever it is. Based on looking at other districts, I always, I don't want to say always, but the one district that I did look at that I liked was Westport. But again, they specify in there what, not what can be said, but how it can be said. And I think that's a point of contention here on this board. People are afraid that, you know, someone's going to get up there and say, you know, well, my teacher, and specifically name that teacher, or, you know, something along those lines, or that administrator, or that board member. So I'd like to see something in there spelt out where, not that it's needed, but it seems that it may be needed.
But in your comment, you said open comment. So you're saying on both agenda and non-agenda items?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And then, Ms. Maxon Cannelly, through the chair to Ms. Maxon Cannelly. What do you see different on your red line versus what you've blacklined? Because I'm not sure that I see a large difference. It just might be, I think it's moving the words around, so if you can point out kind of the fundamental difference that you're seeing between what was struck and what's there.
So for example, when we have presentations, you know, that's a separate item generally from old business or new business. That's something that's informational for the board. If someone has a comment early on that, they can do that during the initial public comment, which is item four on all of our agendas. But at the time of the presentation, that is not the time when there would be, okay, let's open to the public now on this, et cetera, et cetera. Other things, you know, on our current agenda, so that would be looking at numbers seven, eight, nine, and 10. In theory, right now, any one of those, we would pause and say, public comment on this, public comment on that. Again, that's our current agenda, seven, eight, nine, and 10. Heck, number 11, adjournment. I mean, I recognize that's going to the point of the ridiculous, but... So this provides clarity that we are, you know, open to getting more feedback from the public, but as I said, seven, eight, nine, and 10 would not be something that would be, at least at the time it is discussed. Of course, it could be at the opening of the meeting. And so this provided clarity, whereas before, that had not been clear and it had not been clearly defined.
Okay, so I guess my question would be this. So let's just say hypothetically, in number eight, superintendent's report, there's something discussed that raises concern with parents. They have no ability to comment either after, before, or, for that matter, at the next public meeting. Is that correct? Because it will not be an agenda item. And without having that particular section flushed out with specificity, it would be difficult for a member of the public to comment on something that's happening there. We've decided that, you know, we're canceling whatever it is.
Two things. So of course, the public always has a right to comment. I mean, commenting is done...
Public comment, yeah.
Doing public comment here, no. But keep in mind, before we had the bylaw amendment of the last go-around, they couldn't have done that then either, unless it was with the public comment that came at the end of the meeting. But we had attempted to improve on the opportunity for the public to weigh in, as you specify, at the time that something is brought up. So the last go-around, we had attempted to add these discussion points during the meeting, but that was not, as I said, it was a lack of clarity, there was confusion. And where they could, for example, on this agenda, however, where they see that the quarterly financial report will be a topic, well, that might be a cue to someone if they wish to speak early at the public comment that we just passed. They would have had that opportunity then to do, because they would have seen that that was an agenda item.
Okay. So would you say that your changes here are more restrictive or less restrictive than what we have right now?
I think that they are more clear and that they are more conducive to the efficient running of a meeting, while not taking away from the public's opportunity to give us their feedback on anything that is on here, which they can do via other means of communication.
Could I follow on that?
Sure.
The way I read this is that every item of the agenda can be discussed at the beginning of the meeting, but in terms of the efficient management or leadership of the meeting, that, from my perspective, that I focus on those items that are under old business and new business that are voting items, that I would make sure I went to the public before we moved off. And that that's the clarity that I see, that in the middle of the meeting, that's where you interrupt, whereas the other items are all at the beginning of the meeting. That's the way I understand it.
So if we were to do a curriculum presentation, that presentation would come somewhere in three or four, correct? Four.
Somewhere, yes.
Somewhere in that area. And that presentation, individuals in the public would have no ability to comment on it until it's on for a vote or discussion, unless they wait... Well, you're saying no, Ms. Gerber, I'm sorry. But if it's not on the agenda at the next meeting, does an individual have an ability to comment on what they heard at the prior meeting?
I would suggest, based on the way we operate, that there is a presentation, and then if there is a voting item, that voting item is often brought up for a quote "first read," and then at the second meeting. So it's actually on our agenda three times. So they could certainly, on the presentation start of it, they could make a comment about things they hope will be considered. And at the first read meeting, having heard the presentation and taken it home, studied it and all the rest, they could, at the beginning of the meeting, make a comment, having heard it and read it. And then, of course, out of voting item, they would have a third opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Because I guess I have concern, because let's say in April, we're going to have a presentation on kind of results based on the performance improvement, the district improvement plan. Folks won't know what that presentation is until after that presentation's been made, and there won't be a voting item on there. So if there's something that the folks want to weigh in on, you know, not sure it'll be on the next agenda either. So, you know, I actually think that we should either add public comment to the end of the agenda, as well as the beginning, so that folks can have the opportunity to weigh in on what they're hearing, or we should leave it the way it is. And, you know, that being said, we could also amend what is proposed here to, say, comment on both agenda and non-agenda items will take place at the beginning of the meeting. And that would allow people the opportunity to comment at the following meeting, at least. But I think the way it's set up here is there are topics that could be scheduled on an agenda where folks don't necessarily have the ability to then give public comment.
Other comments that board members have? Mr. Patton?
Through the chair to Ms. Maxon Cannelly, I guess a point of clarification. From the previous version to the version that you're proposing, you mentioned, you know, comments on adjournment or some such, but my reading of the old version or the new version still reads it's basically agenda items or new and old business. So new and old business would be when those items happen, but for items that are not under new and old business, the only chance that they would get to comment would be at the beginning of the meeting before technically those discussions happened. Is that still correct? That's why I'm confused. It seems like your interpretation of what I'm reading is different than my interpretation. Can you...
I wish I could clarify your interpretation.
Mr. Patton, if I could, I heard you say that for those items that are not under old and new business, the only time they could make the public comment was at the beginning of the meeting.
Correct.
And it was kind of a repeat of the conversation I was having with Mr. Llewellyn. And then if that item was going to be coming forward as a vote, the next time it comes up as a first read, they would, of course, be able to comment that time.
Okay. So I guess to just give a quick example, committee and liaison reports, which, you know, on this agenda would be number nine. So there's no opportunity for the public to comment, at least currently, on committee and liaison reports, because that's not an old or new business item, and the time to comment on general agenda items would have been at the beginning of the meeting. So is that correct?
Well, actually, what I would say is that because of the wording that we have here, if that is a sort of discussion item, there was a lack of clarity to the public. Well, wait, what if I want to have a comment on that committee and liaison report? What if I want to have a comment about this, that, or the other thing? And so that, right now, there is a lack of clarity. Well, is that a discussion item or not? And by clarifying old business and new business, that gives the I a distinct place explicitly to look on the agenda, so that the guidance to the public is clear. As it is phrased right now, that is ambiguous. And we have had multiple meetings where that was a source of contention, and I would like to reduce contention with clarity.
Okay, understood. But so, under the proposed amendment change...
Right.
You're still saying that, you're clarifying that, again, for that example I gave before on the committee liaison reports, this clarifies, and I agree with you that it does more, but this clarifies that there can be no comment on, again, committee and liaison reports after those reports are made.
Correct, which is also how it was for eons prior to the amendment we did a year ago.
But this is just kind of solidifying that in your mind more.
Correct.
Sorry, sorry.
Other questions? Before I go back to you, is there any other board member that has a question? Ms. Carnell?
Through the chair to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. If I may take the liberty, your intent was to make this clearer...
Yes.
...so that we would have a more efficient meeting. What I'm confused with is, I think most of us up here are more confused. So maybe we should go back and write it and tighten it up a little, because your intentions are great, but the fact that a few of the board members have so many questions, I'm not sure it achieves what you were hoping to achieve.
And while I'm open to that critique, I look at the language in red. Public comment on agenda items will take place at the beginning. It will take place on old business and new business following board discussion of those items. I am not clear on how I could possibly tighten that up any further, but I am open to the critique.
Yeah. Most would be five, and so we've only had two people speak so far, so it's hard to say what most is. So anyways...
No, I want to clarify that. You had to step in and clarify some points. Mr. Calabrese stepped in and clarified some points. Mark had some questions. Mr. Llewellyn. So I think that's more than two of us.
Okay. Other comments before I go back to Mr. Llewellyn? Mr. Llewellyn, and then followed by Mr. Patton.
So I just actually want to go back to something Ms. Maxon Cannelly said, that it was clear a year ago, I think is what you said, correct?
No, it was different a year ago.
It was different, but you said it was clear then, then the most recent changes were not as clear as it was before a year ago, because I wrote it down. So it was clear before a year ago.
And abused?
In your view, yes.
Maxon Cannelly, let Mr. Llewellyn finish a thought.
I apologize.
It was clear because at the beginning of a meeting, folks could comment on any topic.
End of the meeting.
End of the meeting, sorry. Thank you for the correction. They could comment on any topic. And I think that what we have in front of us, the current state today, is less clear because it's more restrictive. And by the wording that's proposed here, it becomes more restrictive yet again. Yes, it's clear, you cannot talk on this, whereas in the past, a member of the public could get up at the end of the meeting and speak on anything they heard during the meeting.
Well, obviously, I take issue with the notion that it is less clear because it is more restrictive. I think this is...
It's more clear because it's more restrictive.
It is more clear because it's more true to the intent, what I will interpret as being the original intent of the amendment. I don't think the amendment, when it had been offered and passed previously, had ever intended to open up adjournment as a potential discussion topic for public comment. Thank you. So I think that this was simply clarifying that, not trying to be more restrictive, simply being more true to the original intent of that amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, did you raise your hand?
I just wanted to quickly clarify my earlier comments. I wasn't confused as to the old wording or the changes that Ms. Maxon Cannelly made. I was more referring to what she was discussing verbally, that I wasn't clear on what she meant by some of her discussion points. So as far as the amendment in front of us, I have no questions on it, and I agree. It streamlines things a little nicer. In my opinion, it doesn't really change the intent or, you know, what the amendment was or what the article was before. So I'm all for making things more concise and understandable.
Final comments? Any other final comments? Mr. Llewellyn, you want to take the... Well, I'll give Mrs. Maxon Cannelly as the mover of the motion, the final comment, but please make your comment.
I'd actually like to make an amendment. My amendment would strike the fourth word, "agenda."
So you've got to tell us what line you're talking about, and is it red or black?
Red, the added words. Public comment on agenda items. I'd like to strike the word "agenda," please, and say, "public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items will take place at the beginning of the meeting." So strike "agenda" and insert both "agenda" and "non-agenda," please.
Okay, so does the secretary have that? Is there a second for that motion? Mrs. Lou McCormick? It's moved and seconded. Do you wish to... You've talked about it, but do you wish to advance an argument?
Sure, I do, thank you. You know, it does represent what Westport and other towns do do. I think that that is something that was stripped away from the public as a right a year ago. And by moving public comment to the beginning of the meeting, you'll notice, we don't have it. We had no one step up today for public comment. Last meeting, we had one person step up. I think it's basically taken away people's ability to speak. So I think to allow people to speak on both agenda and non-agenda items allows them to comment on what they heard at a prior meeting.
The seconder, do you wish to make any comments on the...
Are you sure?
Mr. Calabrese, you raised your hand.
While I tend to agree with you, as you know, it does get us a step closer to Westport. However, I cannot vote for something that's not going to have a timeline, a time limit on it. There's no possible way, if we have a hot topic, we could have a line out that door, and you know that. And there's no way we want to do that.
I'm happy to limit it if you'd like to.
I'll make a motion to it. So then, can I make an amendment to the amendment?
An amendment to the amendment. So yes, we can have one amendment to the amendment.
A friendly amendment. And shall we say 30 minutes? 30 minutes?
So it would read, "public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items will take place at the beginning of the meeting," and limited to 30 minutes?
Limited to 30 minutes.
Westport does 15. Would you like 15? I would be more inclined to support 15. However, again, I think that this, I really think, I think we should probably move on what we've got. However, I'm open to sitting down again and trying to fix this even further. Again, I just don't want to vote on something that's going to not have the dialogue in there that we need it to have, the wording that we need it to have. It's just going to be open up to interpretation, and I want to make sure we have the protections we need in place, that's all.
So are you proceeding with your amendment to the amendment or not?
Say for no longer than 15 minutes.
Perfect.
And I think if we needed to revise that, at least, there's a short period...
Before you make argument, let me make sure the secretary has your exact wording down.
No, she's changed it twice.
Yeah. So could you repeat it again?
I think I've got it.
So could the secretary repeat the amendment in conjunction with Mr. Llewellyn's amendment?
Public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items will take place at the beginning of the meeting for no longer than 15 minutes.
Does that sound correct?
That's fine.
Fine. Do we have a second to the amendment to the amendment? Ms. Carnell. Now, do you wish to make any more argument on the time limit thing?
Well, I think this is at least a first step. It may not fully address everyone's, like, there may, as you say, come a hot topic where we've got 30 people who want to speak. 15 minutes is not going to allow 30 people to speak. 15 minutes is not going to allow 30 people to speak. But, to be honest, right now, we have no time allocated for people to address non-agenda items. So this is at least a start, and if we need to amend this further in the future, I think this at least opens it up to amend the time limit. But I think that that is a good compromise, and I think it's at least a good gesture towards the community to at least allow them a voice on issues that may not be relevant to us.
Excuse me. At the moment, no, at the moment, we're talking about the amendment to the amendment, which is only related to the timeframe.
That's what I'm talking about.
So at the moment, we need to talk about the timeframe, not the larger-
That's what I'm talking about, the 15 minutes.
Not the larger issue of the openness.
It's amendment to the amendment.
No, it's an amendment to the amendment.
She said friendly. I didn't. Well, then, it changed to amendment. That's what it is.
Ms. Carnell. Ms. Carnell, you seconded, and this is on the time limit factor. Any comments that you wish to make on the amendment to the amendment?
I thought you did two, but-
Okay, so my only comment on, on, I'll say, the amendment to the amendment, the time limit, is that frequently, we're not getting going at 7:30. We could find ourselves here at 7:40 getting going. It takes about 10, 15 minutes till we get through the call to order, the pledge, the student reports, et cetera. And suddenly, the business part of the meeting won't start till after 8 o'clock. And if we have presenters here and all the rest, so, so I struggle with that. And so I'll talk about the main amendment after, after the timeframe amendment gets acted on. Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli.
To your point, Mr. Dwyer, I will be opposing this amendment because I oppose the amendment to which it is being attached. That's an argument I'll forward when we get back to that amendment.
Any other conversation on the time? Mr. Patton.
So I'll just say that in terms of 15 minutes, I believe, as the article reads now, there is no time limit. That's correct, right?
Correct.
So we're actually limiting, you know, our, our public comment more than, than, you know, we would before, which I'm not in favor of. I also feel that putting a time limit in general on, on public comment, we have three times a year where we have open forums for people to, actually, you know what, that's the, that's the other part of the amendment. Never mind, I'll say that afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Any other conversation on the time, 15-minute time limit? If not, oop, go ahead, please, it's your amendment to the amendment.
And again, because we're being fairly fluid in this process right now, we are kind of speaking as we're thinking, to address Mr. Patton's concern-
As long as you're not making another amendment. Rob, it's rules only allow one amendment to an amendment. So we have to act on this before you try and put another amendment on.
And I can't make the other one a friendly amendment, even though it was-
We can only act on one amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can she withdraw the amendment? She can, correct?
No, well, no, she can't, because that would require unanimous consent of the board.
And you won't give that-
I would prefer to act on it and clean it out of the way, just a quicker way to do it than introduce yet another motion. Any other comments on the 15-minute time limit relative to the amendment? Okay, then I would ask the secretary to read the amendment to the amendment in the context of where that sentence is.
Public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items will take place at the beginning of the meeting. The amendment to that would then add, "For no longer than 15 minutes."
Thank you. Everybody understand the motion that we're acting on? Okay, all in favor of that, please raise your hand.
I'm going to fail it. I'm going to do it again.
You're not raising your hand, right?
No, I'm going to make an amendment.
Ms. Carnell and Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Mrs. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli, the motion fails two to seven, correct? Back on the main motion, the amendment to the, to the motion. So you want to attempt to further amend it?
I'm going to attempt a friendly amendment. This is a friendly amendment. Okay. So, before, it read, "Public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items will take place at the beginning of the meeting, with non-agenda items being discussed for no longer than 15 minutes." That is my friendly amendment.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chair, that is not a friendly amendment, that is an amendment. Just to be clear about the verbiage.
It would only be a friendly amendment if all, if all nine of us agreed to it. I will not, so yes, she'll have to make it as a formal amendment.
You're changing the whole context, you've got to make that amendment.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a substantial change, so therefore, it deserves to be treated as an amendment to the amendment.
Well, there you go. Sorry.
So I'll ask the secretary to read the new amendment to the amendment.
Public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items will take place at the beginning of the meeting, and then the amendment will be, "With non-agenda items being limited to 15 minutes."
Okay. You've made several comments in favor of this. Is there a second? Mr. Llewellyn, thank you very much. Mrs. Gerber, do you wish to make any further comments on this concept, the change that you've made?
Well, this is amended, this amendment was proposed to address Mr. Patton's, I think, valid concern that we don't mean to limit public comment to only 15 minutes. I think the idea was to not let non-agenda items go on forever.
Mr. Llewellyn, you wish, no? Because it, the amendment to the amendment refers to non-agenda items, then I will address that portion of your amendment to the amendment. That still opens up the door for comments on personnel, because once you accept comments on non-agenda items, essentially, open conversation, the chair cannot rule somebody out of order if they start, start talking about personnel unless they use quite rude and crude comments, which is always the, in the eye of the beholder. And so I am very cautious to open up any conversation on non-agenda items because we have no way of protecting our staff. If there is a constitutional way to protect our staff, then I would agree with Mr. Calabrese that, that if further dialogue showed that we had a constitutional way to do that, well then, let's talk about that, but trying to craft that language at the table and protect our staff at the same time. So I do not support this amendment to the amendment, especially because it's discussing non-agenda items. Other comments that people want to make? Mr. Llewellyn?
Actually, my comment is a question for you. So if we were to have an item on the agenda, does that prevent a person in the public to come up and comment about a member of the staff as it relates to an agenda topic? You're talking about math, and someone makes a comment about math and brings a teacher in. I mean, I'm not sure that what you are stating is not inherent risk either way. I think that in the past, you know, you may have noted one incident where it was an issue, but I'm not sure it's been an issue. I think it plays better than it really is. I think that people have seen what's transpired, and people will contain themselves. But I don't think your argument that you just put forth necessarily prevents folks from commenting on staff.
When we have an item on the agenda, it's either curriculum or textbook. It has nothing to do with personnel, so I would be able to rule somebody out of order for not speaking to the specific item that's on the agenda. That, that would be my view. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
And again, I would say that it doesn't, doesn't necessarily address the issue that you are referring to, because in the last several months, in the last couple of months, we've seen individuals come up here and direct personal attacks at individuals without being stopped. So I don't think that this is necessarily going to change that. The only thing that would change that is for us to have, you know, an understanding at the beginning of each meeting that no individuals shall be cited, and that the chair proactively and aggressively stops and intercedes before it gets too far. Aside from that, I don't see that changing a timeframe, allowing agenda, non-agenda items is, I don't know that that addresses the issue that you're referring to.
Any other comments that people wish to make on the amendment to the amendment? If not, could you read the amendment to the amendments, so there's clarity among the board as to what they're voting on?
Public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items will take place at the beginning of the meeting. The amendment to the amendment would then read, "With non-agenda items being limited to 15 minutes."
Board understand the motion that's in front of us on the amendment to the amendment? All in favor of that, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Mrs., Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli. The amendment fails three to six. We're back to the main amendment to this document. Do we need any further conversation on the main amendment that Mr. Calabrese, Mr. Llewellyn brought forward? Why don't you read it to remind people where we are at the moment?
Public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items will take place at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, everybody understand that? Mr. Llewellyn, that was your amendment. Do you wish to make any final comments, or you're fine with it?
If you may, thank you.
Thank you, okay. All in favor of that amendment, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli, that fails three to six. We're back to the main motion, which is the change in Article 5, Section 6, as presented in front of you in enclosure number one. Any further comment or conversation on the main motion? Mr. Llewellyn?
I think one of the comments that Mr. Calabrese made earlier is that this isn't necessarily the right language, and that he'd like to see it improved upon. I would move that we table this item until we've had an opportunity to refine the language further.
Is there a second to table, to, not to table, because that would say it's, tabling is to pick it up later on in this meeting. You mean to postpone-
Thank you very much for the correction.
-postpone indefinitely, or?
We'll postpone indefinitely.
Indefinitely. Is there a second to postpone indefinitely? Ms. Carnell. Any further argument on the rationale for postpone, or do you, are you done?
I think that we were hasty last year in moving this amendment through. That's now created confusion. I think that there's probably better language, and that we can probably reach a middle ground. So I would prefer to see us stick with what we have until we have ironed out what that language is, and then come back and, and do it all at once, as opposed to cobbling it together slowly.
I support Mr. Calabrese's statement that this is a good start. It clarifies things, and we can always readdress it at another time. So I will not be supporting the postponement, because I think it's at least a good beginning. Further comments on the motion to postpone? Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli?
I will say that this is precisely what I was attempting to avoid last December, when I put forward the idea that I would be bringing forward an amendment to the public comment by law, but that I did not wish to tinker with it at the table for this precise reason. So I believe I acted responsibly and attempted to help with a more efficient meeting by myself going, meeting with two other board members, to come up with language that I thought was, for clarity purposes, a vast improvement on the previous language. I think anyone wishing to continue to tinker, I don't like this board adopting the continual vague philosophy of the "we can do better" approach, so let's postpone leadership, which is how I perceive this. I believe this is an improvement. I think we need to vote on this tonight. I obviously will be supporting it. And anyone who wishes to tinker away with it, make it tighter, make it more clear, change the wording, because in case anyone hasn't noticed, that whole time that we were looking at that amendment, look up at A, "Public comment on agenda items." So this whole thing needed to be rewritten to give any credence to the amendments we've just spent about 15 to 20 minutes on. Anyone wishing to do that work, I welcome their doing it, bringing it forward as another bylaw amendment, but this is the one that I think we need to vote on tonight, because it gives immediate clarity to the public. Anyone wishing to tinker and do better with it, by all means, take a shot at it, but let's vote this one in tonight.
On the motion to postpone, are we ready to act? If so, the motion is to postpone indefinitely, consideration of the enclosure number one, Article 5, Section 6, the amendment thereof. All in favor of the postponement, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli. Back to the main amendment to the bylaws. Does everybody understand where we are at the moment and ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion that reads that the Board of Education approved the bylaw amendment, Article 5, Section 6, as shown in enclosure number one, please raise your hand.
Since this is a voting item?
My interpretation has, in the past, been that this is a procedural item of the board, and therefore, I have not gone to the public on these items. So, so, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli, all opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, and Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes six to three. Thank you very much. Mrs. Brown will update the bylaws and then send you each a copy. Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli, I think you're still up.
So this is Policy 5514 regarding medication. I apologize, my papers got all out of order. I did not receive any questions from the board of new substance. The only issue that had been raised last time was regarding the, the timing of-
I'm sorry.
I apologize, making the motion first.
No, no, it was my, because I normally read it, that the Board of Education approved Policy 5514, Students' Administration of Medication in the Schools. You wish to make that as a motion, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Now continue your conversation.
Again, my apologies. So, once again, I received no questions since January 12th from the board on this policy. The one thing that we did clarify in Policy Committee is that all of these mentions of the Board of Health actually do not need to be on here at all. That was one of the things that came through with the Cabe audit, so the issue of the timing that their date would not be preceding ours will be a non-issue in the course of the cleanup of this policy. So that was the only thing that I felt I'd been instructed to look into. So I don't know if anybody has since had any questions.
Other members of the Policy Committee wish to make any comment? No? Any other questions from board members on this policy? I would remind the board that the intent is to immediately follow this motion with a motion to delete the related Policy 5515, because it becomes redundant to the one that we're about to vote. Any questions on Policy 5514? Okay, going to the public, any member of the public wish to make a comment on Policy 5514, Students' Administration of Medication in the Schools? Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve Policy 5514, Students' Administration of Medication in the Schools. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, thank you very much. The companion motion is to, that the Board of Education approve the deletion of Policy 5515, Students' Protocol for Administration of Emergency Medications by Non-Nursing School Personnel. Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli, do you wish to move that? Seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Do you wish to make any further comments?
I believe they've already been made, in terms of this is avoiding not only certainly redundancy, but then therefore some contradiction, and I'll just leave it at that, that this has now been rendered obsolete. Thank you, that's what I was looking for, with the passing of 5514.
And it reduces the thickness of our policy book just a teeny bit. Any further comments or questions from the board? Any public comment on the deletion of Policy 5515? Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the board. All in favor of the motion that reads that the Board of Education approved the deletion of Policy 5515, Students' Protocol for Administration of Emergency Medications by Non-Nursing School Personnel? Please raise your hand if you are in favor of that. And it is unanimous, nine to zero, thank you very much. Okay, item six, adoption of a recommended budget for the 2016-17 fiscal year. What's the budget number at the moment? What's the budget number at the moment?
165, 393, 561. That would be the proposed number.
Right. So I am going to read this motion with the proposed budget number in here because there are no proposals from the administration that result in updated information that changed that number. And then, of course, the board is welcome to change that through amendment if they wish. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve an operating budget for the 2016-17 fiscal year in the amount of $165,393,561, as presented, to be forwarded to the town of Fairfield. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli. So, Dr. Title, do you have any comments that you want to make on the documents that are in front of us or general comments before we get into board discussion?
I think you mentioned everything we could get together, which I think are responsive to the new request that came in on Tuesday night. One issue that was sort of lingering, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli brought it at the end, and I've had some further conversation with folks in the district, and this was with respect to the $6,400 that's in the budget for the PSATs. We were on the fence about whether that is a good idea or not. Whether or not we do the PSATs, there's always a need for additional money in the assessment line because new kids come in, more kids come into a grade, somebody comes in, needs a specialized assessment. So it's not really a budget issue. We would like more time on that matter. We are not going to give that this fall. We did have a very successful ninth grade program while the 10th and 11th graders took the PSATs. We are, have not at this point been able to, you know, see a copy of the ninth grade PSAT. And so we would like a year to study whether that's really the right approach. Also, we'll have had a year of the district improvement plan and all the data from that. So I will say that we will, in consultation with the headmasters and the curriculum leaders, not implement that in 1617, but that the board, I'm not recommending that the board amend the budget to reflect that. It's a very small number and chances are there will be assessment costs that will be needed to be borne in that account that, at this point, we don't know. Some of these assessments that we give have price increases going forward. If extra kids take Latin and we have to pay for the, more of the Latin exam and all the other assessments that are in there, we'll, language, we'll probably almost certainly need that amount, but we hadn't had a chance to really think that through. So I think that issue can be off the table as far as a budget discussion and that can give us more time to flesh that out once the, we have a better handle on exactly what's on that PSAT for ninth grade. So I think it was the last lingering item. So at that point, I think I'll stop talking.
Any comments from board members on either that, the documents that are in front of you, or in general? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
I just wanted to have one quick follow-up. And first, I'm sure you could have guessed, I was going to lead off with asking that through the chair to Dr. Title, so I appreciate hearing that and hearing that it won't be part of this fall. I really did enjoy hearing exactly how we were looking into the social, emotional health of our freshmen with the program that you had, which really sounded worthwhile. And for a, had a whole host of reasons, ready to come forward to offer that as an amendment to strike that 6,336. I had the number ready, but I completely respect the notion of, I liked, it wasn't, it was never about the money. It was entirely about the philosophy and I appreciate the staff taking a little bit more time to hopefully reconsider that direction and come up with something more valuable, more creative, more worthwhile. So I will not be offering that amendment with Dr. Title's commentary that it won't be part of this fall's activity for incoming freshmen. So thank you for that commentary.
Mr. Llewellyn.
Could I get some clarification, please, on page 158 and 159? So I guess through the chair to Dr. Title.
Give a moment so board members can get to that section.
And what we're looking at here is the table that contains the medical retention fund.
Our favorite topic.
It is our favorite topic, actually, but it'll go away soon, right? In column six, down at the bottom, and I know we went through this before, I just want to get some clarification. We have items in pink and items in red. The items in red, if I'm reading this right, the bottom of column five has a projected IBNR of $1,009,800,000 that is based on the latest projections through November experience done by Aon. Is that correct?
Doreen can come up and walk through this. She's most knowledgeable about this particular document.
At this point, I don't need to be walked through. I just to confirm that that's, I'm reading this correctly, right?
That is the IBNR for June 30, 16, but it wasn't provided by Aon. Aon provides, in September, Aon provides the IBNR for the previous June. So we, they don't, they don't calculate it for us right now. We just estimate it based on the change in the claims from one month to the other.
So I think your answer is yes, but we calculate it, not Aon.
Our best estimate at this point.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, so that is carried forward to column six, which is the 1617 budget under the Connecticut Partnership Plan. And it's called?
Seven?
Cigna runoff. Nope, six, I believe.
Well, it starts in six as the estimate and is carried forward in seven?
Yes, I'm following it kind of over and across, but that's fine. So we can go over to seven. So same line on seven. So that, that's what that number represents. And beneath that, we had a $500,000 reserve for a potential increase in claims.
Correct.
And that is money that is in this budget.
Next year's budget.
The budget we're looking at right now in this budget.
Right.
And will be funded, if needed, to the town to go into the medical retention fund. True or not true?
Yes, it goes over to the medical retention fund.
Okay, and?
Right. So it's in our operating budget.
Okay.
Right? So the 20 million, the purple, right? Doreen, the purple number is what's in the operating budget, right? 20,846,039. So our intent is to move that over to the medical retention fund. It may not all go over all at once. Might go over as needed. We haven't worked the details of that out with the town yet.
Okay, so that, that, that reserve for the potential increase is going to be utilized only if necessary and will stay in our operating budget unless it needs to be transferred across? That's a question.
Well, we might, we would probably, you know, transfer the funds across as needed because what, I think what's going to happen, right, is that the partnership's going to bill us every month for what we need. We're not going to have to transfer it as a lump sum.
But that is for our IBNR, I thought.
Right, but the IBNR, as, well, we have to transfer, the money for the IBNR, the $1,0980,000 is already there.
Correct.
Right? So we need to transfer operating budget money over to the medical retention fund on a monthly basis to pay the bills.
The incurred but not?
The real, the rates for the employees.
1617.
For 1617.
I understand that. But I thought this, this $500,000 here was a reserve for a potential increase in claims that will, at this point, already have been incurred. Those claims, I thought, were being administered in our self-insure, through our self-insurance fund and we're not transferring incurred liabilities that haven't been paid to Connecticut Partnership, right? We're going to let them run out as chaos.
Right, right, right. No, that goes to the medical retention and that gets paid to the current provider, Cigna and?
If I can. With our original discussion, I thought we said it is probably too early to tell whether we might have to put the whole 500 in, in July because it depends on what happens with December through June experience. And if we find ourselves with a poor experience, there does have to be enough cash there. If we find ourselves with a good experience, we may not have to. So it's probably too early to make a definitive. But I think that was our conversation.
It is, and I'm looking for clarification on the transfer. Let's assume for a moment that our experience is right on and Ms. Monsell was able to hit that 198 perfectly. That $500,000 will either stay in our operating budget here in the district or will be transferred to the medical retention fund that the town administers. And I'm trying to understand, is it?
Time, right?
Yes.
So we, that'll stay in our operating budget unless it's needed.
Until needed, right.
Perfect.
In the, in the event that, because you're not going to know.
Absolutely. No, I'm just trying to understand the movements.
Yeah, we may not know what's needed over there. I mean, these, the runout can go six, eight months.
Absolutely. And, and there's a $276,000 net balance at the end, so?
Currently, that's the estimate.
Correct, that's the estimate. So in, in essence, we'd need $2.25 million of payout prior to needing to fund the 500.
Correct.
Okay. That was a clarification I was trying to understand. So that'll all stay here unless needed, but that 274, 276 is already gone.
That's already there.
That's already there. That's, okay. Or will be at that point.
Right. I mean, that's if, if all the claims play out. You know, in a scenario where, you know, to be safe or whatever, we move money over that by the end of, say, 1617, turns out is not needed, because the claims are going to run out for a period of time. That's essentially stays and that's a, that's like an advance payment on the following year's budget. Because that money would be available in 1718, should it still be there. So the board will benefit from it one way or the other. It's a question of whether it will be in this budget or the next budget.
Will the premiums due to the Connecticut Partnership be paid out of the medical retention fund?
Yes.
That's our, that's our agreement with the town. That's still going to be the vehicle that pay them. Yes.
Wow, that's interesting. Okay.
Yeah. We went through that with the fiscal officer and the first electman and that seemed to be particularly in this transition where you've got, right, Doreen, that is our concern, right?
Right.
We're making claim, we're paying rates to the new carrier and we're also paying off three of the old carriers. And so I think the town would just have it all in one place and let that go. And then maybe down the road, they change that, but that's the current methodology. Doreen?
Plus the, remember that the employees pay a portion of this and that's our vehicle for, we collect the employee money and put it in the medical retention fund, so that seems to be the best way to work both of these out.
As well as?
Retirees.
Grant money that goes over, I mean, there's just?
Right.
Yeah, retirees, Culber payments, all that revenue. It just gets collected there. It's easier to account for it. So that Bob was happy to do it that way.
Okay, no, that helps a lot. Thank you.
And it sounds like that will be an ongoing vehicle because we'll still have employee payments, all those things you talked about to try and collect in a single spot to pay a bill.
Okay, thank you. And then, one other question. So when you met with the unions or the unions met among themselves after you met with them, they've all voted and ratified this?
Well, some unions require by their bylaws a vote and others do not. So we have executed memorandums of understanding with all of the bargaining units. So we have that in writing. I'm looking at Mrs. Lefter because I think we finished that off.
Minor word changes.
One for a minor word change. Other than that, so whether or not the individual bargaining unit needed a vote of the membership to enter into that MOU or whether they could do it through their executive board, that was an internal bargaining unit bylaw. I know the teachers in their bylaws actually had to take a vote, but I don't know that that is true at all, the bargaining units.
Okay.
But we have the written authorization from all of them.
The administration and the board is covered in the sense that that, it's all been approved.
That's correct.
Okay. And then in terms of Connecticut, or I guess in this case, the Connecticut Partnership, that is already, you know, quote unquote, accepted? We filled out all of the paperwork and we've been accepted?
We're in the middle of doing that. We're guaranteed acceptance because we're moving all the employees.
Guaranteed.
Under the statute.
Okay, so we're far enough along in the process that we can't be rejected?
No, by law, we can't be rejected.
Oh, wonderful.
It's not just, it's not a bureaucratic decision. We don't have to be accepted. The legislation states that if the entire employee groups, all the employee groups go over, then we have guaranteed acceptance. I sound like an infomercial. You have guaranteed acceptance, right? For this insurance. The only time that they can make a decision about acceptance would be if you were going to move not all of your bargaining units, in which case they would do an analysis because they want to ensure that we're not cherry picking off the bargaining units that are the highest claim and saying, here, take these off our hands. We're keeping all the less expensive ones. So they reserve that right. But under, under the legislation, because we're moving 100%, we're, we'll, we'll be in. Doreen, do you want to amplify anything on that? We've applied, right? You, you pressed the button.
I went online. I, I filled out an application. We had a conference call today. We're well on our way. We have a long way to go, but we're well on our way.
The good, the good thing about this is that, you know, it is January and we, you know, there's always a host of issues you have to do when you're changing carriers. We had a host of issues when we changed to Cigna, forget the state. And we've got enough lead time on this and bargaining units have been really good about working on this, getting this in advance. So we have a chance to really, you know, iron out whatever implementation issues might occur after the changeover upfront as opposed to waiting for things to fall apart and then have to remedy them.
Right.
I mean, there's still going to be bumps in the road.
No, and I think, you know, this has been fabulous and I'm thrilled it's happening and, and at the end of the day, I'm glad that there's no risk of it not happening and then having a $3.5 million hole. That's kind of why I'm asking the questions.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
There won't be a hole. We take whatever deficit and divide it among the nine of us, so it, that's covered quite easily. Any other questions from board members on the budget? Any other questions or comments from board members on the budget? Mr. Patton?
In reference to the, the handouts that we were given tonight, I am, let me just put it, regarding the playgrounds and the information that was provided by Mr. Cullen. Mr. Calabrese had asked for, for the, I'm not sure exactly what it was. He seemed to know the title of the document, but for whatever the, I guess the recommendation was that we needed to replace those playgrounds, the review or whatnot for Jennings and Holland Hill. I don't see that here. I really just see quotes to create the new playgrounds and then the discussion on the, on the playground mulch, which we, which was really not in, in, an issue. So I guess?
Mr. Cullen, you can come up, right.
Mr. Cullen, why don't you explain what's in the handout?
Exactly. Because there's a little more than that.
Yes, I, I think the question was from board member, Mr. Calabrese. Did we get a report from the site visits from a certified playground safety inspector? And I had thought we did get that. We had two different companies come out, three different dates last year, but we actually didn't. A lot of it was verbal, so I tried to pull together the paperwork that we did get. One of the things we did get was from Childscapes. John Lee, who's a certified inspector, was a big issue about the ground surface, safety ground surface. It was related to, we've been putting new wood chips in over 12, 13 years and after 10 years, you're supposed to dig them all out and redo that surfacing. So I wanted to include that information for you. The second sheet I gave you was the invoice for all of the broken pieces throughout the district. Those were all discussed verbally. They were number one issues to take care of. We didn't get that in writing from the certified inspectors, but they walked around the schools with my maintenance supervisor so that invoice identifies to you that those repairs were made. When they looked at Jennings Playground, the one on the left side or the west side, and when they looked at Holland Hills, that also was verbal, that they were in very bad shape and needed to be replaced. Jennings School still has some wood timbers used for handrails and ramps, things that the kids are getting splinters on now. We're doing away with that and a lot of very old pieces. So my apologies, there was not a real report or an inspection report from the either two individuals, but both individuals come from companies that are under the state of Connecticut contract. They're both certified playground safety inspectors and they did come out three different days. So I tried to give you everything I could. The one piece of information I did forget was we also included 20 new mats. We tried to put a heavy rubber black mat where there's heavy use under swings and slides that we did purchase and that came from the two gentlemen, too.
And by no means am I going to argue against replacing these, these two playgrounds, but I will just say, at least for the record in the future? just say, at least for the record in the future, if we're going to get, you know, constructive, you know, reviews and, for actual replacements of things that involve dollars.
Mm-hmm.
That I would think that a company, especially if they came out three times, should put, even if it was an email, you know, just something in writing to say that, you know, in our opinion, you know, for X, Y, and Z reasons, you know, you know, these things should be dismantled, replaced, or whatever.
I agree, I understand.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? If I don't see anybody's hand raised, we'll go to the public. Mr. Calabrese, followed by Mr. Llewellyn?
Yep, Mr. Patton, just following up. Obviously, I know both of these playground safety instructors, inspectors. They're both very good, and I do trust their judgment, even though they didn't put together the written report the way I would have done it. Every professional is different in this field. However, you know, John Lee did write in his, in words, on his, on the back of that first page, what he, you know, how he feels about it. And then, Mr. Cullen did point out, you know, verbally that they were rated number one, and in our, our safety inspection sheet, ones are absolute, need to be replaced now. And technically, when you're told that, you better replace them, because if you don't, if someone gets hurt, you're then negligent for it. We don't want a lawsuit on our hands. So, I would definitely not recommend going near these.
And I presume that if, if it's rated number one, it's in our best interest to get on that, those repairs, even if we're waiting for the report, we ought to take action immediately. Mr. Llewellyn?
I'll hold for a second. I was actually looking at something and had a question, but I'll come back.
Shall we go to the public for any comments on the budget? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I have one last question. I know I had requested this chart to be filled in last time, and it indicated that it wasn't available, given the timeframe, but I'm wondering if you, or Ms. Leonardi, might give us some clarity on what percentage of the budget was allocated towards the special education expenditures versus the regular ed for high school versus the elementary and middle. If you had that general breakdown, I know that's kind of a generic, kind of big breakdown, but I think that'd be helpful in understanding the trend of allocation of spending, because it is a large number.
I think it's actually a question for Ms. Moncel, because she has to go get that from the state. It's not a number we calculate. So, Ms. Leonardi wants to discuss that. That's fine, but you do have seven years of trend on there that we gave. So, I think it's pretty clear what the trend is.
In our proposed budget.
I understand.
Yeah.
Andrea Leonardi, Director of Special Education and Pupil Services. We really don't disaggregate, like, the percent that goes to elementary, the percent that goes to middle, the percentage that goes to high. I can tell you that it's a pretty constant number hovering between 22 and 24% of the whole district budget goes to the education of children with disabilities. That has been, is and has been consistent. It fluctuates, but it fluctuates within that percentage range, and has for the better part of the past 20 years. So, it's, from a trend perspective, the fluctuation is within that 23, or 22 to 24% of the overall budget is directed toward the education of children with disabilities.
But this year, we don't know what the, the proposed budget, we don't know how much of it is allocated toward the special.
The state calculates through our ED001. It's a report we provide to the state of all sorts of numbers, and they, their formula generates a consistent percentage rate for all the districts in the state.
But we don't know ourselves, so we can't calculate our spending ourselves.
Well, I can tell you how much we're spending right now. I can tell you what we project to have spent by the end, but because all of the other accounts are also in flocks, my best estimate is going to be we're probably somewhere in the range of 23.2 or 3%. That, that's about where we are for the 15, 16 school year.
Oh, no, I was saying in our proposed budget.
The proposed budget.
Yeah, in the one that we are talking about right now, what was the allocation? I mean, clearly, that may not be actual, but I'm just wondering how we allocated spending.
It's consistent with what, what the needs of the district are. If I had to do it, I haven't done that analysis, to go into the entire budget, separate out the percentages, separate out actuals.
Okay, that's fine, so we don't, I just wanted to know if you knew.
But my best guess, with 20 years of data before me, is it will be somewhere between 22 and 24% as a proportion of the total budget that goes to serve special ed. We've never gone beyond that, and we rarely go below that. So, that's, we're pretty consistently in that range, 22 to 24%.
Yeah, the only reason I pointed out was because the trend seemed like it was kind of a straight line. It wasn't like an up and down with a flat average. It looked like it had been trending upwards, and I didn't have the data for the last two years, so I was curious to see if the trend had continued, or if we've flattened.
It fluctuates. It can fluctuate. You know, the fluctuation isn't up and down 2 and 3%. It's up 0.5, down 0.3, up 0.2, down 0.1. It hovers right in that range, 22 to 24%.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We'll go to the public now, since I have, Ms. Carnell?
Before you hobble back, I was, I was trying to get you. I've been there, so my apologies. And I appreciate that it's been, it sounds like a pretty constant in history. Do you happen to know if the number of people that are utilizing the services has been as much of a constant?
That's in the chart.
The prevalence rate of children with special needs has also been, when I got here 20 years ago, we were at 17% prevalence rate. We are now somewhere around 11%. I will say that we are seeing increases in referrals, new referrals to special ed, particularly around students with mental health issues across the span. So, if I had to predict the future, my guess is we will see, as, even as enrollment goes down, we're still seeing increases in referrals in that domain. The other domains are relatively stable, so I would see them, the prevalence rate remaining somewhat constant there, but this whole mental health piece is trending upward all over the country. And so, I, my crystal ball will tell me we will probably see small ticks up in the prevalence rate because of that issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No more questions. So, with no comments from the board, I presume we're ready to take action on the budget, but let me go to the members of the public and see if they have any, any comments that they wish to make on the recommended budget for 2016, 17, which is $165,393,561. Any members of the public wish to come forward and address the board?
Suzanne Misca, 123 Rag 8 Road. On the budget, it is a little concerning to see playgrounds going down to level one before we decide to act on them. I also know that when we first started in the district, the PTAs did a lot of the playground work, so I would like to ask the district, going forward, I don't want a playground to fall on a child's head and cause us any insurance claim, but I do think we need to create some sort of policy. You know, the PTAs, you know, I strongly disagreed with them supplying technology to our schools, while I appreciate it helps on the budget process. Here, we have a playground that probably could have been implemented and happened a little bit sooner than having to go through this budget process. I am going to reiterate, while I don't want any specific cuts, I do still have a problem with the math textbook without having a curriculum review of it, so I don't know how you want to proceed with that, but I would like to hold off on it until you guys have had a chance to fully review it. Given the budget by program numbers, I do think it's time that the Board of Ed make, have a presentation provided on the special ed program. I think we look at general instruction through curriculum and programs and textbooks. We have not had a presentation on this program in a very long time, and it would be helpful to the public to fully appreciate the value and programs that are being offered to children in the district. I think, once you start to have, where two, two lines are coming very close to each other, we need to have a responsibility as a board, as a public, to make sure that these needs are being met of these students. I don't want anything cut for them, but I do think it's time that we have this discussion, so everyone's aware of what's happening, and that makes sure that these student needs are being met. The other thing that I would like to say is I'd like to thank Ms. Moncel. She was very quick in responding to a question I had on the 401A plan that many of your union contracts have agreed to, and I applaud them. It's a wonderful thing to have a union agree to go into this type of self-plan. I did not get a chance to get back to her, but she was very prompt and concise. I do think that this board, as the employer of these unions, I would love Ms. Moncel to provide a presentation to you all on that 401A plan. I think it's important that you appreciate what your unions have agreed to do, and appreciate the structure of the plan and what's being offered by the district. The town, obviously, has made that same slant, so maybe it could be a group presentation, but I think it's important, as the employer, that you appreciate what your unions have agreed to, and especially with negotiations coming in front of you, it's an important piece. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to speak on the next year's budget? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, Kelly McWinnie, Churchill Road. I, in my gut, I don't even think I need to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway, a very wise person once explained to me that the purpose of the Board of Ed in the budget process was to put together the most comprehensive budget that would effectively meet the needs of our students, and that it was really later on down the process where affordability and et cetera came into play. So, I would just urge you, as a board, to pass the budget as it has been presented to you, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward to address the board? Seeing nobody, back to the board. Are we ready to take action? Any final comments? Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Patton, and Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I just wanted some clarification on something that I think was addressed on Tuesday. It was the iReady versus the Star, and we have the two purchase orders in here, but it was a little confusing, because I thought the Star was giving us the math and English for the same price, but on the invoice, it shows that the iReady is giving us both of them for the same price, although we're choosing, I believe, not to continue with the iReady. So, I just was hoping to get some clarification on that.
I think Dr. Boyce answered this last time, so I'll ask her to answer it this time, so we get the same answer.
And please state your name for the TV.
Mr. Cummings.
Meg Boyce, I'm the Director of Secondary Ed.
I'm Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Ed.
It is correct. Star is, has providing, in this, in the contract with the RESCs, the state agencies, they are giving us both reading and math. However, what you see here is only reading, because that's all we are taking from Star. We have access to math, but because we told them we weren't going to use it this year, it's not stated in the paperwork. iReady is what we're using for math, and it's stated in there. So, next year, we will use Star for the same price that's quoted here, and we will get both reading and math.
That is the same answer you gave the other day, but I'm still confused.
Good. Could you put your microphone down for the benefit of?
Through the chair to Dr. Title, to Ms. Boyce. You're correct, that is the same answer, but I'm still confused just by looking at the invoices.
It's confusing, because I understand why you're confused. Star only listed reading, even though we get both reading and math if we want it. We told them we only wanted reading, and so they only listed reading on our invoice.
Then, regards to iReady, they listed both, even though we choose, we chose to just use two different companies. I don't know why they did it. Okay, so, I guess the question is, would iReady give us both the same price?
I don't know. Do you know the answer to that?
Would iReady give us the same price?
For math and reading.
As Star?
No, because according to this, it's actually less for math and English.
I don't know.
Okay. It says it here, so I was just.
I want to make sure that, to clarify, you're asking, would both companies deliver both subjects for the price that is mentioned there? And the answer is yes, correct? We don't happen to be taking advantage of it, because we chose two different assessment companies, for one for English Language Arch and one for.
I believe it is. I know it is definitely true for Star. That's the state contract. I just have never asked that question of iReady, so I'm reluctant to say yes.
So, I take back my assurances.
For the purposes of looking at the 16, 17 budget, the only one that we are budgeting for, the only one we need to worry about is Star. iReady is not being renewed for next year. So, for the budget in front of you, we budgeted the Star number.
No, I, I understand, and thank you for that. I have my own feelings about iReady versus Star, but I was wondering if it was a financial decision, or finance was part of the decision, I should say, for choosing one over the other.
I was really about which assessment we thought would be the best to use with the students. The financial consideration was secondary. Now, it turns out that the RESCs have a really good deal on this, so we're able to get what we want at a lower price than we otherwise would, but the price differential wasn't enough to move the needle. It really was about the test, and the reporting, and so forth, and being consistent, and we think it'll be a big improvement for both teachers and parents next year. But, the price is what it is.
I think Mr. Patton, you finished? I think Mr. Patton is next. Mr. Patton, I think, Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you want to follow up on this subject? Mr. Patton, do you mind if she, please do? Please do.
I'm just curious, because when we saw the Star results versus the iReady results, we were aware that the iReady had a whole bunch of kind of supportive information for the student results, and very detailed, really, I thought, very informative. I even think teachers expressed that they thought it was very useful. I didn't see any for the Star, and I also didn't get necessarily feedback from teachers that they found it particularly useful either. So, I'm wondering, did you get different kind of feedback than what I'm hearing at different levels? Perhaps it's different in different grade levels or something?
Yeah, I can. And specifically to the Star reading, being a new assessment, and just really finishing our second iteration of it, there is a learning curve, as there was last year for iReady for the staff, but our staff has seen the benefits in terms of its ability to identify students for perhaps different reading needs. It's one data point of many data points, but it provides some supplemental information that we're finding so far important. The other thing that we find advantageous to it is that it's, and this will be echoed in the math assessment, its impact on instructional time is far less than the iReady, and provides that same level of information. So, as we move forward with, with the reading this year, which is a constant process of helping our staff disseminate the results, discern the results, disseminate the results, make meaning of them against the other reading assessments they give, we're going to have to follow that up next year as we move forward with math. So, but we do find that the reports right now in reading are very helpful to, and again, I want to emphasize this, and I don't think I can emphasize this enough, is one of several data points we use to determine a student's instructional level in reading.
Thank you.
Right, because when I noted the iReady, one of the advantages that you all had mentioned was its high correlation with the S-Backs, and, yeah, I actually found that to be generally true, but the Star didn't seem to have that same, it did.
Yeah, it does.
Yes, it is, has the same correlation to the Common Core, and our curriculum is based on the Common Core, so the correlation is not any different with Star.
Interesting.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
Not relating.
Okay.
You are excused. I was just thinking, by my calculations, this is, I think, my ninth education budget in the town of Fairfield that I've had the opportunity to scrutinize and pour through, and I just want to commend and thank Dr. Title and all the staff for their hard work that they do every year through this process. It's never easy, you know, whether I was sitting out there or in here, the tough questions always get asked, and everybody gets put under the gun, and you all handle yourselves admirably. And I would like to say that, this being, again, about budget number nine, I was telling Dr. Title this last week, it seems to read better, it seems to make more sense. I think by the amount of questions that were asked, at least at the board table in the last three meetings, and the ones that were. that were handed in for that matter, it seems to be that there is more clarity and more transparency than ever before in a budget. I know we've won some awards for formatting and stuff before in the book, but I think that I'm very happy with this year's or next year's budget. I'm thrilled that all the improvements, Dr. Title and the staff could fit in there between books and world language and extracurricular stuff at the middle schools and you name it, and we still have only a small increase, much lower than has been the norm in the last 10 years. So, again, I'm thrilled, and I support it fully as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewellen?
I guess as I sit and I look at the size of the budget, and I look at the increases, and we have, we're very fortunate to have the change in the healthcare plan, allowing us to invest in other student programs. One of the things that Ms. McWhinney just said is the budget has to meet the needs of our students, and one of the questions I have is, how do we know that it actually meets the needs of our students? We haven't had reviews of a lot of our curriculum in quite some time, so I don't know if we're spending the dollars in the right areas or the wrong areas. I'm not disputing the amount as much as I am some of the programs, and I don't think this board has the information at hand to know if we're truly meeting the needs of the students. One of the things I'd actually like to do is propose that we add the iReady test back into the budget, and the reason being is, back in 2012, I believe, you'll recognize the Fairfield ranking for our math scores that were done at that time, and let's just, it suffice to say that Fairfield didn't rank very well versus the other AMB districts in DRG's AMB. One of the things we did at that time was change our elementary curriculum. There was a discussion at a prior board meeting where we wanted to, some of us wanted to have a more in-depth review of that curriculum. We have switched from the CMTs to nothing to the S-Backs to iReady, and now we're dropping iReady for the benefit of STAR. We don't have any continuity to know if the curriculum that we implemented, and someone correct me here on the exact number of years, five or six years ago, at the elementary level, has been effective or not effective. I think that it's imperative that we keep iReady for at least a year while we overlap it with STAR if we plan on transitioning to STAR for math, so that we can have at least a baseline from which to measure. So, I would propose that for the $48,000, we actually leave iReady in, or put iReady into the budget for next year, and I would leave the finding of that $58,000, or $48,000, excuse me, to Dr. Title and his staff to find, or, you know, clearly I can go and find some locations.
Our budget process doesn't allow us to pass a budget that says, let's add and let Dr. Title figure out where to take it from. If you're going to propose an amendment, you either propose an amendment to add the money, and we'll have to confirm that that is a correct number that the staff agree with, or you add that number and specifically state where you want to reduce the budget to balance it out.
Sure. So, I would like to add the $48,000.
Before you make the official motion, so that we don't have to play with amendments, can staff through Dr. Title answer whether Mr. Lewellen's comment about $48,000 is what we would have to add to the budget to add iReady? We can still debate about whether that still makes sense, but I want to make sure that we get the correct number in there.
The number on the invoice would be 45, and we paid $3,000 for training, but I'm assuming if this goes up, 48 is as good a number as any.
While, yes, while the staff are researching the number, please do.
Because it goes with that.
Use the mic.
So, my clarified question is, are we keeping STAR in too? Is that what he's proposing?
Yes.
That we have both?
I believe so.
We have both currently, so I'm saying we retain the second one.
We don't have both in math and reading.
We have not had, correct me if I'm wrong, we've not used STAR yet for math, so we do not have two years of data that will give us any continuity. So, if we want to be able to assess progress, we should be able to understand this.
Well, you're making argument for your motion, but let me get the number there so that you can finish your amendment.
I'm looking out at the staff for this. I mean, there is a curriculum associate's price quote for $48,018, which is a year old.
Yeah, a year old.
So, we would, we're not sure if that would hold, right?
Right.
Nancy, do you want to, Nancy Burns actually secures this.
Ow, sorry, I just slammed the chair into my knee. That was not a good thing to do. I'm Nancy Burns, the IT Manager, and I've done the procurement for both STAR and iReady for the last couple of years. My recommendation would be to take last year's number. I don't have it in front of me, but I understand, I think you guys have it, it's $48,000. I don't know if it's on the note, on the not, and I'd add 5%. That would give us a buffer for a potential price increase, which frankly, almost every publisher does every year, and also give us the capacity to handle additional students.
So, a quick math of 5% of $48,000 would be $2,400, so $2,400 plus $48,000, the proppant number would be $50,400 to avail ourselves of this second test.
Recommendation, and if I had budgeted iReady this year, that's what I would have put forward.
Does that feel like a reasonable approach to getting a number?
It's an estimate anyways.
Yeah, with one adjustment. The adjustment is-
With that number, please finish your amendment.
Yeah, with, there's $3,000 in training in here, and we've already been through that training, so would we need the training for $3,000?
Yeah, we'll agree no.
What's that?
We agree no.
Okay, good. So, we just keep it to 48, and that accounts for your 5% more or less.
There you go.
The 48 included the, yeah, so, okay, use 48.
That's a good enough placeholder.
Use 48.
Dr. Title, you said a minute ago, the price is what it is. I mean, it's directionally there.
Use 48.
It's a, that's a, that's a good enough estimate. It's really about the merits of it.
Correct.
Yeah. So, there's, so-
So, the, if you can get the amendment on the table so that we can then discuss it.
Sure. Do you want the cut side now, or do you want just the adding of this? We'll debate that before.
Both.
Okay. So, in terms of the cut, well, the SAT, PSAT was taken off the table. Was that $6,800?
$6,336.
$6,336. You're not just freewheeling this, are you?
That leaves us 40-
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. What do you mean freewheeling it? You want exact numbers, or should we just estimate?
Let me say that you no longer have the floor because you're trying to put an amendment together.
41664.
So, so, so let me, do you know exactly where you're going to take-
Yes.
The $48,000 from?
I do.
Then please read your amendment so that we can get that on the floor.
I would like to amend the budget to include iReady for the 1617 school year in the amount of $48,000 to be funded through $6,336 of savings from the PSAT assessment that will not be implemented, and $41,664 from the $500,000 reserve in the Medical Retention Fund.
Is there a second for that? Mrs. Lou McCormick, does the secretary have the amendment as Mr. Lewellen presented it?
A motion to amend the budget to include the iReady testing for 201617 school year for $48,000 to be funded through $6,336 of savings from the PSAT assessment, and $41,664 from the $500,000 reserve in the Medical Retention Fund.
Mr. Lewellen, we've got it clear?
Perfect.
Okay. And there's a second. Do you wish to make any further argument on this amendment?
I just think, given where we sat in the past, and we haven't had an opportunity to look at anything, that it is imperative, since we're not up for a full review for math for another several years, and we've not been through a mini-review on a major subject, that we should keep a common assessment for more than a year or two so that we can get baseline data in for the STAR if, in fact, that's the way we want to transition.
And the person who seconded, do you wish to make any comment on the motion?
I mean, that's just, it makes good common sense from a statistical point of view. So, if we want good baseline, you know, a trend that we can actually read, you need a baseline, and I think many of us have said for quite a while that we would like a review of the new mathematics curriculum. And the iReady test, I thought, was actually pretty good. I mean, it was long, but the STAR is very short, so it would be nice to see how they match against each other one year, and the cost is not that onerous that it wouldn't be worth it to do so.
Thank you. Dr. Title, we generally ask for your viewpoint on matters that we're voting on. Do you have any comments that you wish to make?
Of course. I have issues with both sides of the proposal with respect to iReady and not having a data point from end to end. We did give the S-Back in math last spring. We're giving the S-Back again this spring, and so we have two data points on our students' performance on S-Back, and it will be continuing the following year. So, we have S-Back data from spring of 2015, and that was all shared with the board in October, I believe, was when we did that. We'll be giving it again this spring. We're talking about the 1617 year now in terms of the year-over-year, so the S-Back will be given again in spring of '17. So, in fact, we will have three consecutive data points of a very detailed test on that front. Secondly, my issue is that, I understand this, the proposal is that we would give STAR and iReady, which would mean we would be double-testing all of our students in fall, winter, and spring in math with STAR and iReady, and I think there's, I have a concern about that, to put it politely. And so, those two points, the first things that come into my, into my mind, and if my staff wants to jump in on this, feel free to, or the other board members may just want to go from here. The other side of the equation is that undoubtedly, I think we're going to need that PSAT money, as I spoke about earlier, but I'm very concerned about taking money out of the health insurance account without the knowledge that that money, in fact, will really, really be there. I think I want us to signal to the town bodies that we're being very prudent and conservative in our budgeting of that health insurance account because there are some unknowns about this, and that had we thought that, given the current run, that we could have made it with, say, $460,000, then we would have budgeted $460,000, and we would have reduced the budget, you know, accordingly. So, those are my initial thoughts on it, but if board members wish to have other staff speak on it, they're more than happy to ask, because-
Okay, let's go to the board first. Ms. Pitco and Mr. Patton. Ms. Pitco, I'll divide the teachers up. Ms. Pitco, Mr. Patton, and then back to Mrs. Max and Carnell.
Through the chair to Dr. Title, and by all means, Dr. Boyce, Dr. Cummings. So, you stated that this means that the students would be taking two assessments. I believe Dr. Boyce stated, or it might have been Dr. Cummings, I apologize, that the STAR is, in fact, takes less time and is based on the Common Core. Is the iReady based on the Common Core?
Yes.
So, what is the need to have two if they're both based on the Common Core and one takes less instructional time out of the classroom?
I'm presuming that's a rhetorical question. It wasn't our proposal.
Yeah, right. Mr. Patton?
I agree. I'm just going to, Dr. Title has basically said what I was thinking. I'm not in favor, lots of research proves otherwise, that over-testing for assessments doesn't benefit anybody, and at some point, as we've learned with S-Back, you have to have a year zero to start with. So, to overlap another year, eventually the test is going to go bye-bye, so it doesn't really do anything anyways. And as to taking money out of the Medical Insurance Fund, I was guessing that that's what was, you were going to suggest, and it's just, history has proven, whether it's the RTM that does it, or whether it's Paving or the Medical Retention Fund, those are the two big targets, it seems, in town and education budgets. It's not recommended, as Dr. Title said. You have no idea what's going to happen there, and if we're out $50,000, we're going to have to find it somewhere. So, not in favor of-
Mrs. Max and Carnell.
I do understand Mr. Lewellen's point. I mean, obviously, we went through this similar issue with the school climate survey, when we had to go from the one where we had an outside job, outside service do it and do that analysis, and then due to budget issues, we had to make the break and go to our own, and I certainly completely understand that idea of wanting to have the same tests with similar data points. That said, my host of objections to doing it far outweigh that. For example, when we knew that we had the opportunity to do that with the CMT, you know, we could have continued for one more year, even knowing it was on its way out, and I, same with CAPT, and I very much appreciated the whole notion of just cut it loose. We're not going to use it as a data point anymore. We need to listen to our staff. We've just recently received communication as a board regarding the examination in our elementary schools of the instructional time and of how it is being used, and of the needs of our youngest learners, perhaps to be, not perhaps, to be, have less testing time, to have more active time. And the last thing we need to, to Ms. Pitco's point, it's not just that it's two tests, but it's multiple times a year. And the thought that we're doing that with a test that we know is going to be on the way out, again, I definitely understand the point, but considering that I was all set to make a motion to get rid of the whole PSAT notion, PSAT as an instrument, certainly the last thing I'd want to do is add duplicate testing. And, you know, we're looking at increasing world language time, you know, now down to the third grade. We're looking at science and social studies needing to work its way in with increasing instructional time, and the thought that we're going to do a little bit less with any of those subjects for, while in exchange, doing more testing, I just couldn't abide by that.
Any other comments before I go back to Mr. Lewellen for the final comment on this subject? Do you mind if Mr. Patton- Feel free. A quick comment, Mr. Patton?
Through the chair to Dr. Title, this is kind of tangentially related. For the year that we did-
It had to be very closely related.
Well, it's about testing and S-Backs and whatnot. We, we did like a trial year on S-Back first, right? We volunteered for that. That's correct?
Well, Mrs. Max and Carnell actually referenced it. So, in, in the spring of 2014, the state gave all districts an option. You either take the S-Back, or you take the CMT CAPT, or you could do both. 90-plus percent of the districts chose to do the S-Back, but it was a pilot year, and no results were ever given to us about our student performance that year. So, the first year-
That's my question.
So, the data that you all got in October, by subject, by grade, by score point, by school, in considerable detail, was essentially the baseline data for S-Back. Previously, you'd received all the data on math and language arts, on the CMT, by school, for all of the years of the CMT, and could easily see patterns and trends in that, in that data. So, in 2014, you're correct, we took the S-Back, but there is no data that year. There's a hole in the state testing program.
So, even though it wouldn't be official, we, we don't have that data to even use it as any kind of extra baseline.
No, it was considered a pilot by the state, and they didn't feel the data was sufficiently valid to share it with any, any district.
That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Mr. Lewellen, final comment?
Sure, actually, a couple. So, the data you're referencing from the S-Back, I actually have the package from September 8th. My understanding from looking at what was at least provided to the board, and let's take Table 9, for example, Fairfield mathematics results by school, grade three, number of students at Ber, 68, and then it gives us a distribution. I don't see strand level. I believe they've changed the word strand. Do we have the same level of strand information provided under the S-Back for last year that we used to receive from the CMTs, or are- we used to receive from the CMTs, or are provided by I-Ready? Is that something we have and we just haven't shared?
So the S back doesn't call them strands.
They call them...
They call them claims.
Claims, thank you.
And we do have data on the, on the claims. And when we present the status update to the board in April, we'll have some information on the claims. However, what we gave you was, you know, immediately after the results came out, the most understandable and complete package of what we had. The claims are really different, there's a different scale, and so we'll, we'll build that into the status update. But their claims are not nearly the level of detail we used to get on CMT. You might remember, all the strands, there were 25 of them, not all 25 were tested in every grade. But there was very specific strand data.
Correct.
Unfortunately, I'll say that as a judgment, unfortunately, that level of detail in mathematics is not available on S back. It's at a very highly aggregated level.
Correct.
And so, yeah, they have to dig in to see what's included in there. It's more like large categories, as opposed to really specific strands. So the strand information that you're used to seeing from CMT is not available for S back.
So I guess my point is, looking at I-Ready, I-Ready's a very good diagnostic tool. It tells you the distribution of your class, it tells you your child's or your student's score, almost like the CMT would have in a, in a very detailed level. My understanding from the STAR is it's not going to be as effective from an instructional perspective, although it is aligned with the Common Core, it does not provide that same level of detail from the way it was represented to us. All that being said, you know, we are testing these kids not for the sake of testing them, but to improve the educational outcomes. And if we're going to have the kids sit through a test, I'm happy to drop the STAR and just keep the I-Ready. But I was trying to work with you to transition, so we at least have overlapping data. In terms of the funding, we've got $750,000, $767,000 of cushion in the IBNR line going forward. If we don't want to take from there, we're going to be reviewing very shortly with Ms. Monsell, teacher, staff, year-to-date numbers, where we've already transferred out $877,000 that we have over-appropriated on the Teaching Staff 101 line. I think if the district wants to find the additional $48,000, that, that's something that can occur. The other point is, you know, when the math curriculum was voted in back in 2013, we have a current member of the board who said, "We're going to see test results soon. We'll be asking for that data, and it will be a matter of public record. We're going to get feedback very, very quickly to see we are moving in the right direction." At the end of the day, we're all sitting here for the education of the kids, the students. And in order for us to do our jobs as board members, I think we need better insight into, are we spending the dollars correctly? I'm not disputing the, the number, the dollars. I'm, I just don't know how we're spending them. We've been provided no insight. So I would like to see the I-Ready stay. If it's a matter of budget or over-testing, feel free to remove the STAR. But at least one gives us a strand-level instructional data that's better. So those are my final comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the board ready to act? We have gone to the public on the main budget. Is there any further discussion on this before we go to the budget, to the public on the amendment? Is there any further comment from the board before we go to the public on the amendment? And so if you could read the amendment, so that the public understands what they could comment on?
The motion is to amend the budget to include I-Ready in 2016-17 for $48,000 to be funded through $6,336 of savings from the PSAT that has been removed, and $41,664 from 500, from the $500,000 reserve in the Medical Retention Fund.
Thank you. Any member of the public wish to come forward and speak on the amendment to the budget offered by Mr. Llewellyn? Please state your name and address.
Susie, I'm at 123 Rygate Road. I think it's kind of a shame that we haven't had the ability to put these two tests side by side in math, to see that we have comparable, to show the board that there is this comparable. And I appreciate that at some point, there has to be a trust level established. But we're talking about $46,000, and I have been leveled this by the Board of Finance numerous times, $46,000 on a $165 million budget. And while I appreciate that now there's a concern about the Medical Retention Plan, when in the past, this board was willing to take it to an IBNR of zero, the fact that this board and the district was able to move $2.5 million to bail yourselves out last year, I think $46,000 might be something you'd be able to find if you choose not to take it out of the Medical Retention Plan. My big question on the $500,000 cushion, and while I appreciate that it's there, is will the end result be that that goes back to the town in order to meet the demands and the screamings that we heard during election season of some members of the Board of Finance wanting their $500,000 back? Or is, are you, I'm assuming you're ready to walk away from it and give it back to the town? I appreciate that, but we're talking about $46,000, and I think you're more than capable of coming up with $46,000 if you needed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public also wish to come forward? I'm not sure who's, Mr. Convertito? And do I understand I have another one in waiting and another one in waiting? Okay, so I have two others after...
Just keep coming back for more. John Convertito, 62 Oyster Road. I propose to you, it's not an issue of $48,000. I propose to you that you are talking about one data point amongst many, okay? And that you have a professional staff who has made a judgment that that data point is not of value to them, okay? They are the educators, so I would urge you not to approve this amendment.
Thank you very much. Please come forward. State your name and address.
Don Llewellyn, Fairfield. Although I do appreciate Mr. Convertito's remarks, it was when he was sitting at this board in 2012, and there was a seven-year review of the math curriculum. This was handed out about the CMTs, and Fairfield ranked in the bottom quintile of our DRG, not even Fairfield County. So I urge this board to actually, and I'm mistake, if I'm not mistaken, as Dr. Tidal said, the S backs, the first field test, didn't count. We have taken the S back, and I guess we do have one measurement, but not a real in-depth measurement by strand, claim, or domain. And I know I-Ready has that type of reporting. They have a student report that shows where the child is, what instructional needs that child can access with teacher's help. And it is a great software or system to, to assess these students. So I urge this board to use it as a benchmark going forward. I think it's very important, given the fact that our CMT scores were very, very low in 2012, and we have nothing. And I know, as a matter of fact, looking back at some of our minutes, actually, the accurate minutes, and it was the Chair, Mr. Dwyer, commented that the district's CMT math scores were at the bottom quartile of the DRG. And he asked if the new curriculum was going to move us in the top. And other board members at that time were very concerned. So I really hope that you take that into consider, consideration, and keeping the I-Ready, so that we can have a benchmark for the students going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to come forward to speak on this subject? So I think we have one plus one other.
Kelly McWinnie, Churchill Road again. And I, being up here twice, it's not anything I want to do. But as a parent, I'd just like to say, please do not have my child take another standardized assessment, more time away from actual instruction. It's not the only way that teachers can assess what our kids need. It's, and it's, and we're talking about one year. I, oh, I just have such a heavy heart when I think about mult, you know, multiple assessments multiple times a year, and all of, to this end of chasing data. I, I really, I really hope you don't, don't do this. Thanks.
Thank you. And please come forward, state your name and affiliation with the school district.
So Bob Smoller, President of the Fairfield Education Association. I just want the board to know that there was very careful consideration given to the testing, and I would concur with the prior speaker that an overabundance of testing at the expense of instructional time is, you know, very damaging to the flow of the school year. If anybody who's taught certainly knows that. I also would agree that just one additional year of I-Ready isn't going to give us the kind of additional benchmarking we need. I think we do need to eventually settle on a test that we can live with over a period of years to get the kind of data we want. But just one extra year of I-Ready, I don't think is going to get it done. I also want to very significantly guard you against reducing the Medical Retention Fund as someone with a lot of insurance experience. When you depart from a self-funded program into a fully insured program, as we're doing, you really want to make sure you've got that Medical Retention Fund fully funded, because you never know what surprises are going to come into place. Runoff is very unpredictable. I heard Dr. Tidal mention eight months. I think he's being conservative. I think you could see runoff going on for 12 months. And the board is responsible for all of those expenses, and I think it would be highly advisable to start monkeying with the Medical Retention Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward to talk about the amendment to the budget? Is the board ready to act on the amendment? Is the board clear on what the amendment is, or do you need the secretary to read it again? Everybody's clear? Fine. All in favor of the amendment as proposed by Mr. Llewellyn concerning I-Ready? Please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, and Mrs. Max and Cannelli. The motion loses six, three to six. We're back to the main motion. Are we ready to act on the main motion? Seeing no hands raised, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve an operating budget for the 2016-17 fiscal year in the amount of $165,393,561, as presented to be forwarded to the town of Fairfield. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Mrs., Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Ms. Max and Cannelli, opposed? Abstain? Abstain, Mr. Llewellyn. The motion passes 8:01. I want to thank the board for all the reading that they did, but I especially want to encourage the board, as well as members of the public, that this is only the first step. And full attendance at various public meetings to promote the needs of the students, as represented by the budget that we just passed, is essential. So I encourage all of you, to the extent that your schedule allows, to, to maybe not make every meeting, as some of us might try and do, but at least make some meetings. So thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the board for its support. I really feel like this budget is a team effort, because the board gave a lot of input into this budget, several points during the fall, and even last year during the budget. And we did our best to listen to that, some ideas we thought might go in the budget. Board members raised legitimate objections to at various points, and we removed those. Other areas, board members were very clear, they were high priorities, we were listening, and we put those in. We couldn't necessarily get everything in that everybody wanted, but I really feel like this budget does reflect a team effort, where the board has had significant input into the making of this budget, and if, for no other reason than by the unanimous approval of the District Improvement Plan last July, really gives us a roadmap to develop a budget. So the aphorism I'd like to say is that we're budgeting the plan, not just simply planning a budget. And I appreciate the support, and I think you all recognize that if this budget manages to go through without any issues, really feel like the school system will be in a much better spot as we open the year next year than we currently are. So I appreciate the support, and as Mr. Dwyer said, I always welcome the company as we move ahead. The next official meeting on this topic is March 8th, and that will be the joint meeting of the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance. It's an informational meeting, public comment is usually allowed. And then there are several meetings of the Board of Finance where they discuss it and either take public comment or, and so forth. But March 8th is sort of the next one to circle on your calendars. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On to item 6B, approval of the National Youth Tobacco Survey. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the 2016 National Youth Tobacco Survey. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Max and Cannelli. Mrs. Gerber, do you wish to defer to staff at the moment, or do you have a comment? Do you have, you want to make a comment?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory what it is. This is something that by policy requires your approval, because it's being conducted by a third party. It is a sample, so it is something that the Connecticut Department of Public Health supports and encourages us to participate in. It's simply about tobacco use. You have a copy of the survey there. The only school that this will impact is Fairfield Ward High School, and they plan to administer the survey in two classes in each grade level. So this is not a system-wide survey, it's not that impactful on us. So we're recommending that you approve this. I don't know if anybody, Mrs. Parks, want to add anything to that?
Well, let's see if the staff, if the board has any questions on the survey. Any questions on the survey that you'd want to address to Dr. Tidal or Mrs. Parks?
I just have a procedural question, actually. Did we receive this in a prior package, because it's up for vote? And I thought voting items, we typically got to see at one meeting and then vote on in the second meeting. And I noticed the date on here is November, so I'm perplexed.
This has been floating around, and we were actually discussing whether or not the board had to approve it or not. And we were up in the air on that for a while, and we finally determined that yes, the board does have to approve it. They'd like us to move it as rapidly as possible, but of course, it's always up to the board. If you want to defer action and take action in February, that's your plan. But they're kind of looking for an answer. But I clearly understand the comment. If this is a big controversy that you wish to spend more time thinking about, then we would inform them that we don't have approval till February 16th. So it's certainly up to you to do it, but sometimes if I feel they're fairly routine, and not that controversial, that we would try to move it through, because they'd like to see us get going.
Is this, is this the first time this survey has been administered?
I've not seen this before. Go ahead, Karen.
Not in the last five years that I know. But it potentially might have been administered previously in the district. I don't know if either, it would have been, it's only for grades, I believe, eight through 12. So it might have been at, six through 12?
Six through 12, yeah.
Nine by definition.
We're only doing nine through 12. They select, they're only select, they only select one school in a district, but I don't really know if it's ever been administered.
Actually, it's been around for quite a while. We just have never gotten picked.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Llewellyn?
Well, it does. My question's more about the procedure and why this hasn't been posted, noticed, and then going again.
Let's just say, the agendas have been very crowded.
So, so my suggestion would be that where, it's kind of like an administrative decision to comply with policy, we put it on for action. Certainly, if a majority of the board is not comfortable taking action, we could postpone it. Or if a majority of the board is comfortable with just moving this forward, we can act on it. Can I have other viewpoints from board members as to whether they're interested in moving forward on this? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I made the motion to move this forward, because I do support it.
It's already, you're saying you support acting on it, because it's...
I made the motion.
Yeah, you made the motion.
Because I support it.
Yeah, right.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you don't have to make another motion to do that?
I'm not making a motion. I said, "I made the motion." Can I please finish what I was saying?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was not done yet.
Let's finish your comment.
Thank you. I made the motion, because I feel this is a very important questionnaire. I think that it's something that we discuss in our health classes, in elementary school, and middle school, and high school, talking about the health issues with smoking. And I think this is a very helpful tool to use, especially to kind of rema- I think this is a very helpful tool to use, especially to kind of remind high school students about all of the different things here. By answering some of these questions, it will remind them of some of the things that they've learned in the past. It is a problem. Cigarettes are still a problem, maybe not as much as they used to be, but they are, as are e-cigarettes. So I think it's very helpful to have this questionnaire, and that's why I support it.
I heard the word being "I make a motion" instead of "I made a motion," and that's what I was clarifying in my own mind as to what I heard. You raised the subject, so does any other board member that wish to make a comment before I go back to Mr. Lou Allen? Did you raise your hand, Mr. Patton?
I'm not sure if you should postpone or not.
Yeah, to whether it makes sense to you to act on it or not.
I'm happy to act on it.
I'm just?
Yeah. There's a question.
So that we have a sense of the board as to whether they're ready to act or not?
Do you support it or not?
Are you ready to act?
I have no problem. Yeah, I was being, sorry. Are you asking for comments or are you just asking for general questions?
Whether the board is ready to act or not in response to Mr., okay, in response to Mr. Lou Allen's question. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Very quickly, I agree with his point of, the question being raised is that I would prefer the on-for-one voting at the next. That said, I support moving ahead with it tonight.
Okay. Any other comments on it? Mr. Lou Allen, do you want to make a comment?
I just have one, and I'm happy to act on it. It was a procedural question.
No, no, I'm glad that you raised it.
I just want to make sure that on the back here, that I know we've had issues in the past with folks wanting to opt out, and there is actually a parental permission form that is an opt-out form, correct?
Yes, and that is the one we would use. It's the last page, the opt-out.
It's green. It'll be posted to Infinite Campus in due time and?
Well, this is?
Depends whether we'll post it or how we'll distribute it, but we will get it distributed, yes.
It'll be readily known to all parents?
Yes.
Thank you. I know we had a little mishap at the last one, so that's fine.
There's two different actual forms, and parent decides which one to fill out. One says I grant, and one says I don't grant. So there's?
Well, that's an opt-in. I don't think?
Yeah, you really are opting in. It's?
No, I don't think so.
We're doing the green. The green.
Right.
Opt-out.
Okay, I got it.
It's an opt-out only.
Got you. All right, thank you.
So we do want to go to the public on this, but you have a question.
Trying to collect the yellow ones?
Mrs. Lou McCormick, followed by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, followed by Mr. Patton.
So is this to be given this year?
Yes.
Okay, and this is going to be administered, it's going to take a whole class period to do this? It says one class period?
No, 35 minutes.
No, yeah, and it will probably, so I spoke with Mr. Ebling, most likely it'll be done in two health classes. If you noticed in the survey, they don't do the whole school, they don't do a whole grade, they pick two classes in each of the four grades, and I'm not exactly sure how they'll do it. It's random, but once we let them know that it's approved and we're ready to go forward, they will make that contact with Ward, and they'll determine exactly which classes it will be administered in.
And if a child, let's say the parent opts them out, what are they going to do during that period? Do they just sit quietly? Like, what are you going to do with the kids?
Well, I don't know. We haven't discussed that yet. I mean, we have given other surveys where kids have opted out, and the student may do some work in class while the other kids are taking the survey.
They can take it basically as a study hall while everybody else, you know, in class. They just sit at their desk.
Sure, yeah, the teacher will, it will be in a class, not a study hall, so there will be something for the students to do who opt out.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the kids aren't forced to just sit there and stare at the wall, that they can actually use their time productively.
Yeah, I'm sure they will be able to. And there may be some way that we'll have to get the opt-outs in advance of giving the survey, so there may be some way that the students will, that the school will come up with something else for those students to do. Because obviously, we'll have to send out the opt-out forms in advance, so before we give the survey, we'll know who will not be taking it.
And will they be sent out physically or just by an email that you have to look up, which the parents may not even know is ever there?
You mean the opt-out letter?
Yeah.
We haven't discussed that yet, so I'm not sure. Mr. Ebling and I, do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Ebling?
He's giving responses behind you so I can see what the answers are in advance.
We tend not to like to mail things because it's so expensive. And I'm the one always pushing digital, so we'll hear from Mr. Ebling.
And I'm pushing the paper.
If you would introduce yourself.
David Ebling, Ward headmaster. It's such a small number of students, we're only talking about 80 students that we're going to be surveying in total out of our whole school population. So, you know, typically, we don't have many students and parents opt out of our surveys, so we'll probably do exactly what you said, be looking to give them a study hall time for the 35 minutes. Our classes, as you know, are now 85 minutes, so it's not even a full class period, so we're not anticipating that it will be that disruptive. We'll probably look to see if we can use some for the health classes. We don't offer health now every marking period for every grade level, so we'll have to find some in our other grade levels. What class we'll use, we'll determine as a school because it'll have to be randomly chosen.
Okay, and I just want to make sure that the parents actually have the option because sometimes, you know, some parents check, and sometimes they don't, right? Okay.
So are you saying they'll mail?
We'll probably distribute it through the classroom, and the teacher will collect it back.
Yeah, that's great, okay.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, you're finished, correct? Yeah, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
My first question, I realize the next sentence asked it, but in the cover letter, there is the assurance of protecting student privacy for allowing the anonymous participation. I didn't like the wording of "they're designed to protect." That sounds like a gaping hole, but the next sentence seems to be really clear in terms of state, county, city, district, school, and student will not be identified. I couldn't think of where there was a loophole in that, so I just appreciated reading that. I was curious about the monetary award. Do you see where this would be going toward in terms of curriculum and health, or?
Well, we noticed that they don't indicate the actual monetary award.
I noticed that, too.
We're hoping for thousands of dollars, but?
It's kind of vague.
Chances are, we'll be using it through our health program. If you recall, we were talking earlier tonight about what we did with our ninth grade during the PSAT testing, and we did the program of Rachel's Challenge. When we bring in a group like that, it does cost money, so we'll probably use it for something along those lines.
Thank you.
Mr. Patton?
Ask an answer.
Anybody else have questions? If not, we have not gone to the public yet, right? So any member of the public wish to make a comment on implementation of the National Youth Tobacco Survey? Please come forward if you do. Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the 2016 National Youth Tobacco Survey. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous? No, I know, thank you very much. On to the minutes, item number seven, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the January 12th, 2016 regular meeting. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mrs. Pitco? Any conversation on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of January 12th? Please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Lou Allen. The motion passes seven to two. Superintendent's report and the quarterly financial report.
Back to 15, 16. Thank you for that 16, 17 budget, by the way. Second quarter report halfway through the fiscal year. We are projecting our expenses at June 30, 16 will be within budget. You will always, I can guarantee you that you will always hear me qualify that statement, that there's always the unknown with maintenance and special ed expenses, that I will always qualify any financial report I give, especially with six months left in the year to give. There's too many unknowns that can happen, too many unforeseen maintenance issues or, you know, individual needs of students that need to be met. We have year-to-date, as of December, benefited from the lack of snow and the warmer weather, so that was a good thing. Hopefully, what we saw last weekend is maybe the last of it. Because we, I have to qualify the projection because of maintenance and special ed, we always try to keep a project or two in reserve, and we have two HVAC projects, about $200,000, that will be released later in the year when we know that those, you know, we have a really good handle on the maintenance and special ed costs. As I reported in the first quarter, there will be no significant balances in the salary accounts. The additional staff that we had to hire will be offset by the additional retirees, so they'll virtually be awash, but there will be not, there will not be any significant balances there. I also mentioned before that the town pension, we know is going to be over by $78,000. Pupil services, you see a negative $3.3 million, but we're estimating excess cost to be $3.5, and that hasn't been applied yet. We never do that until May when we get the final payment. There was an emergency hot water project done at Ward to the tune of about $80,000, but maintenance is still keeping their accounts in balance within their own department. Utilities are within budget. Transportation is another area that although it appears to be in a deficit position on the report, it will also be offset by a small amount of excess cost revenue, magnet school, transportation money, and pre-K revenue, but it's also projected right now to be in, within budget. But there again, there's a place where specialized transportation is always unpredictable, so those, that's the highlight of all the activity through 12/31. Questions?
Anything further you want to say, Dr. Tittle? Comments from the board? Comments or questions from the board? Mr. Lou Allen?
Wouldn't be a financial review if I didn't ask questions, would it? If we look at, and I'll ask this probably every time till it's broken out, if we look at line 305 under Support Services, Professional Technical, on the back page, two of two?
Yes.
That is where Legal Services is?
Yes.
And what is the breakdown there?
I think you have a handout.
So it's?
Right.
It's enclosed in the? Straight back, it's 525, budget, and 390-somethings expended?
112 expended.
Well, 112 is cash, but the other's been?
Incovered, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the conversation for board members, the, one of the documents in the packet that was handed out for the budget is what Mr. Lou Allen and Mrs. Muncell are referring to that have the up-to-date comment on legal, or that account, actually.
Right, so going forward, we could break that, that'd be great. And in terms on page one, we've got our teaching staff. I referenced this earlier. We've had transfers out of $877,000 as of 12/31. What does that represent?
We use these categories to balance our salary accounts. So for instance, in the 101, if there's a vacancy, and we do it monthly, so if there's a vacancy in a teaching staff position at the time where we close a month, the, whatever that vacancy represents, say it's $45,000, that money is moved down into staff replacement. And that's how we balance that category, because that person will no longer be paid. So that's where the staff replacement is where the money accumulates, but as somewhere in the budget process, I think we talked about the subaccounts and how, you know, why aren't they budgeted, you know, why aren't they budgeted at a higher level to meet the actual expenditures? It's because we don't know what we're going to need for subs, but this, you know, the subs and the savings from salaries, you know, counteract each other.
Would 877,000 represent somewhere north of 100 FTE salaries? Assuming an average salary of 87, would make at least 100, right?
Not necessarily.
Be more, because it's only half a year?
Are you looking for an FTE associate?
No, I'm just trying to understand why that's such a large number. I mean, it would imply if this was at the beginning of the year, that we would be 100 teachers short of what we're budgeted, but if we're halfway through the year, does that mean it's 200 short because we're halfway through?
No, this is cumulative.
It is, okay, so then it'd be 100 plus, I think.
And it's not at any one given time, though.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lou Allen?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
So no other questions? Dr. Tittle, do you have any other comments that you want to make on the superintendent's report?
Nope.
Nope. Committee liaison reports, anything from people who are members of a particular committee other than Ms. Pitco? Okay, I have two, Ms. Pitco, followed by Mrs. Gerber.
Okay, SEPTA has a few dates. Wednesday, February 10th at 7:30, McKinley Elementary School Library, they're having their meeting, and Rehab Associates is coming to give a presentation. The big date is for tomorrow, SEPTA's grant deadline. It says to please get the word out to educators, therapists, parents, and peers. I believe if you go on their website, the application is there, but tomorrow's the deadline. I have a few other ones. Saturday night at the Fairfield YMCA is Family Fun Night for children with special needs and their families. It's from 5:30 to 8:30. Once again, if you go on the website, you can register for the event. And? I think that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, as the board knows, because I did send you an email last week at the Ludlow High School Building Committee, they did get a proposal from Gilbane for the windows part of the project, and so right now, the building committee is planning on going back to the other town bodies to ask for more funding, and I'm not quite sure what the dates are because originally, the thought was to go to the Board of Selectmen meeting yesterday, but I know they had a very full agenda, so that did not happen, so I'm not sure exactly where that is in the process, but I'll keep everyone apprised.
Anything else, Mr. Lou Allen?
Quick question for Ms. Gerber. Do you know what the, did they come up with a final budget?
Yes, that was in the email that I sent to you.
I know, I apologize.
Yeah, there was a whole attachment with the whole proposal. It's 3.5 million.
3.5, thank you so much.
Anything else? On the Board of Selectmen meeting, most of their focus was on Holland Hill, and they approved all of the motions required to move the Holland Hill project forward. I would remind the board that the Board of Selectmen have chosen to start with an initial building committee composed of people who can meet during the day and perhaps once a week so that we can move this project ahead with some level of speed. All of the people who have been appointed to it are quite familiar with the building committee process, and for those of you who have been around for a while, you know that sometimes it takes a couple of months to orientate and bring up to speed the building committee before they can then start taking action, and so the ability to meet more frequently and not have, we'll still have the formal orientation session, but to be able to move a little bit quicker will help us move the project forward quickly. That is especially important so that we can get the additional portable classrooms there by this September. So that's where Holland Hill is. The building committee does have to go to the RTM, so that will be on whatever agenda the RTM says they'll put it on. We're hoping it will be at the end of February. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Just one quick comment. I don't know to whom to direct this comment, so I'll put it out generally to Mr. Dwyer and Dr. Tittle, but well done getting Tom Quinn to sign on again.
Yes.
So congratulations on that. It'll be good for all of us. So, congratulations on that. It'll be good for all of us.
Any other comments on the liaison? If not, open board comment. I'm sorry, I was writing something down. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I just wanted to make note on the budget. While I know I had asked some questions which had not gone answered, and I was somewhat disappointed, I'm hoping that in the coming year, we'll be able to do more reviews of the different areas that we haven't had an opportunity to do in the past. Namely, I think it's important that we look at our numbers from a student population perspective in addition to the items. I think that will give us greater clarity into how we're spending our money, in which case, we can tie it directly back to the type of programs that we're offering to decide and assess whether we are actually being effective. Are the performance numbers coinciding with our investments that we are doing? So, I'm hoping that we can do that going forward. And though I was not able to get the clarity that I always wish for, despite the 200, you know, pages of numbers, so many numbers, but I still have questions. And often, it's because I try to look at the numbers in a different way. And when I can't find that clarity, I ask questions. And the reason I was able to come to terms this year with that fact was because I really appreciated the staff coming up with that $3.5 million. I thought the effort put into that, and the creativity in pushing that forward, just created the opportunity for us to invest in other programs that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to. And so, for really that reason, I think, you know, you guys did deserve quite a bit of kudos for that step. However, that does not mean that I am not going to continue to push for further clarity in the programs and the financial aspects of our budgets going forward. So, thank you.
Any other board members wish to make a comment? I see two hands at the moment. Mr. Patton, followed by Mr. Calabrese?
I'll just quickly say, as is one of the charges of being a member of a Board of Education, we have approved, and now, at least those who have approved it, we need to advocate for this budget. So, that means going to lots of other town meetings and talking about it on Facebook, and answering questions to RTM members who have questions or other town bodies. And we approved it. We need to support it and see it through to the very end on May 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, whatever that is, where the RTM has the final vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Calabrese?
Well, Mr. Patton took the words right out of my mouth. There are nine of us on this board. We all do need to be at these meetings, supporting this budget that we have approved. And that also goes for all the viewers at home. We need support at the meeting. So, please come out and support the budget as much as possible. Thank you.
With no, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance before we were discussing the budget. But I did just want to thank Dr. Tittle and his staff for this budget presentation, both the initial presentation itself and all of the very lengthy, detailed questions that you turned around very, very quickly. I really do appreciate all the work you did. Thank you so much. And I'm really excited to see all of the things that this board unanimously approved in the district improvement plan moving forward. So, I'm really excited about this and look forward to supporting the budget.
No other hands going up. We have a motion for adjournment. Ms. Pitco, followed by Mr. Patton. All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.